All right.
I tried to put out some side paths so it didn't have to hit the wall. But I don't like to do that or something around. I tried rotating it. You can't always help start from the wall, but it can be at the end of the wall. Don't touch that table.
The one?
Yeah, the other.
Nope, yep, got it all done. We have already dealt with that. Oh, there we go. Call this meeting nerd six o'clock, please stand for the pledge. Why do we do this?
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. Welcome, welcome. Also going to read our mission statement. In partnerships with the communities, the mission of the Doverland and Fulton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong learners. Thank you all. A roll call, all board members, except Amy Johnson are present. Also with us this evening are Superintendent Hunstad, ECE Director Rosanne Olness, our new community service director Eric Olson. So welcome to Eric. Eileen Lunter, our transportation director, and Ken Hendrickson, our middle school principal. We have a change to the agenda. We are going to add nine point seven. This will be an addendum to the retirement contract of Brian Tigerson in regards to health insurance. So that being said, any other changes?
Sure.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Uh-huh.
Now, David, before you want a second?
Sure.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Aye, aye. Question carries. Public comments, there is none tonight. Any rebel recognition team? Anything happening besides our spring kids are getting very frustrated and coaches? Yep.
State speech, we had one student, maybe champion.
Oh, wonderful. Who was that?
Brayden Johnson.
Oh, Brayden Johnson. Oh, good for him. That's awesome.
Category he was in? He was in state speed.
Good for him. Glad you guys mentioned it. I work with his mom, so just have to mention it to her. That's awesome. Very, very. Kudos to you. That's awesome. Any other things? No, I think they've had what? No baseball, no softball.
Had some indoor track.
Couple track meets.
Golf, nothing either.
Nothing. All right. Well, we'll have more to talk about next time. We'll have a choir concert and hopefully getting some games for the kids, so. All right, let's move on to reports. Six point one, Eileen, you're up. You are first.
Best for first.
I agree with that.
Come on up here so you don't have to holler at us, son. Just come on up. Thank you.
Kids stand most of developed a tracking program for our stop on violations. And about, I think about two years ago, I think those new stop lines, they're definitely doing their job. This year alone, we had fifty-three stop on violations. Thirty-seven of them were able to track totally. Kids play some plates, everything turned into state. Sixteen we couldn't, either they were too late, it's dark in the morning, some were running with no plates. It's a different option.
Don't take your plates out, David.
That's who it was. And the outside cameras are definitely doing their job, too. We have developed appropriate languages, the he said, she said fights, we can break that up. They're definitely doing their job, probably winning well, I would say. Since purchasing the new activity bus, we've had eleven coaches, teachers, and admin go through type three training. It helps us a lot with bus driver shortage. It's also great for house effect when it comes to taking small groups versus taking a bus for seventy-seven kids when you're coming with thirteen. The new activity bus has been to Minneapolis several times. It's took our special kids to special, for the kids to special Olympics, community activities. It took numerous to set up new body activities. We use a lot of the smaller things, golf, it's going to be one if we ever get to play.
If we get to play.
Yeah. We're still struggling with bus driver shortages. Our largest contractor's down two afternoon drivers, so basically we have one extracurricular driver that happens to come from my department, unfortunately. But Keith Holm, they recently get the CDL, he is the one that's kind of carrying our load right now. We need to pick up a person to supplement, so at least we have one and hopefully the weather once we get going will make everything go easy, right? I don't know about that. Doug, you're about to come out of retirement to serve for us when we had some medical leave. It's a painting, we're going to probably have, are you looking for a new driver? So if you know anybody looking for a job, write that on your blog. Can you ask for it? Sign me up.
That's your book. Anybody that's watching, this is Eileen's book. We need help in the transportation department.
Yeah, bus contractors will take them, we'll take them.
Yeah, we'll take them.
Please contact Eileen, she'll be more than happy to buy you a coffee.
Yes. Two, three weeks, I don't care. We're going to be soon starting DSY, figuring out what we need for busing there. Community added activities keeps us busy during the summer. The other big thing this summer is we are going to be going through switching all those schools around, so our needs are going to change, shuttle wise. I see a lot of different changes coming in that direction. And the other good thing, it's off a permanent home. Hopefully before we change all this.
True.
So we can carry thirty-four routes around, going from place to place. That pretty much covers it. Get some nice weather now so the kids can actually play sports. We can make up our calendar and we can actually stick to it instead of like five events today that we cancel, it would be very nice. And that's transportation role.
Well, thank you.
So, so one thing that I really did, and I did visit about, there's nothing happening yet, but I wanted to say at the board meeting, too, is we're looking at for next year, because the fuel escalator is costing us a lot of money right now. Are there things that we could do with routes? So we're starting to discuss possibly, do we look at eliminating a route? And what would it look like? How can we do it? Could we do it? How about the transportation in town? For three blocks, can we go to six blocks? I don't know. These are discussions we're going to have to have, just because our budgets are whacked with the fuel escalator. Is this kind of, it's not kind of, it's hitting us right between the eyes.
It's bad.
It's bad. So this month is nine thousand dollars difference in order addition, just in the fuel escalator. So we're talking about what are some things we can do to offset it. I think I have already started that conversation, but, you know, nothing yet, but that's something we're going to have to look at, just to offset costs. I don't see fuel costs changing too much next year, so we might have to make some adjustments. So, just to say, hopefully some people know that might be something that's going to come and we'll try to get it out as soon as we can in the summer with those decisions. Obviously, you guys will be a part of that, so.
How's it gone this last semester and settling to recruiter academy?
I'm sorry.
How's it gone this last semester and settling to the career academy?
You know, that's working really well, actually, as long as kids, once our kids lose their driving privileges and then they come and we, imagine that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. They lose their driving privileges, which is a little issue because what we use, we use special ed drivers, so like someday Barb can only take them over, she's only got one for three. If we have Keith available, he would have one for eight. So usually it's really pretty even keel, works out really, really well. There's just those unexpected where parents have taken their driving privileges away and then they come running right off this counter.
I suppose that could change next fall.
Could, and that's where that bus will come into play, too. That impunity bus, we're hoping that that can be our shuttle and then it can handle more kids, so.
Because I've heard even more had issues shuttling their own kids.
Yeah.
They're tough on time, so.
It's a tough, it's a great opportunity for us, but it is, it does like for transportation. We've been doing really well with it, though. Like I said, we only had it two times and that was basically where somebody lost their driving privileges. It was short lived.
Thank you. All right, six point two, Rosanne, early childhood report.
Take notice of your things just saying off the next morning notes.
Thank you.
This, this year is, it's starting to wind on down. Just last week, we had our last class of our evening parent-child, ECFE classes. It was nice to have those parents back in the classroom with their children, having those parented times to be helping some area parents with some of their parenting struggles and issues, giving them some new ideas to use at home. Finishing up school readiness and talks as well. Three weeks left. I really don't know where the year went. It's hard to believe to be saying that. I'll be sending out those parent surveys this week and next week for getting feedback from the families that are currently using our programs. With our ECFE, I did write in a couple, how many families we served at each site. So we did have from September to December, we had eight families. And then from January to April, we had nine families in hold. So we had twelve families between the two sessions. So a couple of new families at second session versus the first session. It was nice to have some new families from the district checking on our ECFE classes. Currently taking those registrations for our fall school readiness and talks classes, those have been just rolling in very, very continuously, just a couple every week now. We'll see those all the way up until first week of classes, that whole term in September. Been helping with Brooke and Jamie and Wayne in the elementary office and really looking at helping find all those kindergartners for fall. So I know Brooke and I email back and forth quite often on working and seeing who is still offer that we know that should be registering and how can we get them to register. My emailing, makes phone calls. I've been in contact with Lakes and Prairies Head Start Program. They've been really good about sending me a list of who, who we should be expecting on those enrollments and then I'm letting them know when I see those enrollments come in and who hasn't, so they can continue to help assist those families as well. Doing great with our school readiness families. There's only one family that hasn't registered for kindergarten yet this fall. And that family, Jenna Foley from ELL, has been assisting with that family and getting them registered due to some language barriers. Early childhood screenings, rolling through, strong with those, just one did one this afternoon at two thirty. We've done forty-one during our screening days when I have extra staff coming in to help. And then I've done twenty individual screening appointments throughout the year plus twelve kindergartners who have come in without screening. That number of kindergartners coming in without screening is greatly reduced from last year. I think last year I told you guys I was doing, well, unless it was almost twenty. So we got those reduced. Working on getting those last of the kids who are currently registered for fall, getting those kids scheduled for screenings. Of those eighty-two that are registered for kindergarten, I'm down to three that need screening and all three families have had messages from me. So waiting to hear back to get full schedule. I've got eight more screenings coming up with two tomorrow, so still some openings to get some more screenings done so we can have as few in the fall we have to deal with those kindergartners. Any questions?
You want to go first? Okay. Does our preschool programs look the same next year, just all in doors?
All in doors.
Times and everything?
Yep, same times. We are going to try doing a four half day and a three half day. Looking at cost for families, I want to continue to have that three half day because when those families are paying for daycare, I want to have an option that families can have, have a program that isn't out of their budget. With daycare costs rising and families wanting to get their kids into preschool, I want to make sure that we still have those opportunities to provide those families with reasonably costing preschool programs in districts. Also, those families are able to apply for scholarships as well for our programs, too, so.
So the tops of the school readiness will look the same?
Yep, look very similar. We will be reducing, normally we'd have twenty kids in our school readiness program, going up to twenty. With the classrooms that will be moving into quite a bit smaller, we will be capping it at fifteen to sixteen for school readiness. We just can't do twenty school readiness kids in the smaller sized classrooms and having enough room for them. Although having that fourth room, we do have plans for one of the rooms to be a gross motor room, where we don't have that daily access to the gym and we really want to be able to provide those opportunities of doing some running games, having some space for some scooter boards, pool groups, balls, some ride on cars and things for them to move, obstacle courses, the parachute, to have some bigger spaces to do that in instead of in the classroom.
That was pretty much the same question I had. Is there any talk about a go into full time? Just so that, I mean, I know one of the hindrances we had was I worked during the day, so even if we had daycare, we didn't have, I didn't have the flexibility to be able to go pick my kid up. And so, with the exception of my last one, who happened to go to daycare with another kid who was coming, we couldn't make that work. And I think it's a great opportunity, you have a great program, but I think, you know, there's, let's see, room in our district to be able to have maybe that full time thing where we could serve kids outside of that daycare piece.
Yeah, with the, with the four classrooms we have, space wise, I, that would take a whole solid full classroom, so I'm not sure.
We have four classrooms next year?
We have four.
Yeah, but we only have two, two this year.
Right, the one, the one is quite a bit, or it's bigger, so this, these are smaller rooms.
These are smaller rooms.
So someday soon, I will be the superintendent of the school and that would be a construction project. But one of the things, I, it just, this is, this is something that's near and dear to me, too, and I would love to spend more time actually visit with Rosanne about preschool and my thoughts about the activity room because of gym space now, hoping that they can use the cafeteria maybe in the morning before we, or after breakfast. I'd love to just sit and schedule and work on what her hopes and dreams for the program. I haven't had a chance to do that yet. To answer some of those things that you're asking, those are the same things that my past experiences, I'd like to find out so we can support you to in your program. It's, it's coming soon.
Because it's a great program, I think it gives a lot out of it in the short term that they're there.
Right, and how can we serve more? Right, yeah, no, I agree.
I think, yeah, transportation, I think, is the biggest sphere, which you hear from a lot of the gatherings.
Always, yeah.
But, I mean, we don't really have any good options at this time, so I understand what you're saying.
But also just to move into that new space, okay, what does that look like? How does that go? So then the following year, we can really say, well, you know, we really could do, or you know, opens the door maybe, hopefully, right?
Yep, and you know, and really keeping it developmentally appropriate.
Oh, absolutely.
Because a, some, for some children, a five day half day program is not developmentally appropriate for them. They're not really even ready for it. And I, for me, preschool wise, I have a hard time seeing kids there all day. It'd be, it would have to be more of a combined with.
With the daycare.
With the daycare setting, because you want to make sure that kids are having their downtime as well, if they have that structure scheduled too often.
Good conversations to come.
Very much.
Yeah, excited. Always do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosanne. All right, on to food service report. Welcome, Eric. Come on up.
Hello. So, I'm Eric Olson. I've been working here for about six weeks, eight weeks. It's been a pleasure working here so far. My background is in university food service over at NDSU. So there's been a lot of things to learn on the K-12 side. It's been a good experience, you know, learning all of that and working with the great staff here. Everyone that I've interacted with has been really supportive and helpful, so that's been a great advantage getting up to speed here. I want to go over some of the old things from the previous report that Chelsea had done, an update on the supply chain disruptions. Unfortunately, they are forecasted to continue through next school year. So impacts of that are going to be increased costs just from higher inputs in every other aspect of it, fuel, materials, labor. Narrowing variety because manufacturers are focusing on their profitable lines and not doing some of the institutional packaging that is not quite as profitable. And continued outs and short orders on our trucks, which makes life a headache for our cooks and also for our students because sometimes they get disappointed that their favorite thing's not on the menu because it's not there. We're mitigating as much as we can. Staff are really flexible, adapting our menus day to day. When possible, we purchase a little bit of a buffer, knowing that the next truck might be a couple cases short, so try and get it while it's available. And then we're also working with distributors to make sure that we're getting any substitutes communicated to us and making sure that as much as possible, they're meeting the guidelines nutritionally for the kiddos. Another update, prime vendor. Just a reminder that last fall, Cashwa terminated their prime vendor agreement with us, so we've been working without a prime vendor and just kind of putting orders together through different distributors. We still go through Cashwa for most of our product. A lot of that's built up on the relationship we had with them before and also because they still are contracted to service our commodities, so it's just helpful to meet our minimum caseload so that when we need them, we can get commodities from the warehouse as they come in. Kind of the patchwork quilt that we're working with right now, Cashwa, Reinhardt, Cisco, US Foods, we get produce from a couple different places, Bix for our farm to school stuff, Advanced Produce for our Department of Defense federal allocation. Get our milk from Casque, we get our bread from Pan and Gold. So just in case you guys were curious, when you're looking at the invoices that could approved, what are all of these? Just an idea that there's a lot of different stuff that we're trying to make work on a given week. Another update, that farm to school grant that Chelsea applied for last fall was approved for the cattle and also for the match on produce, but it was not approved for the equipment aspect of it. Some new business. Since I started, we've kind of put the express lane on a couple of grants. One was for an equipment replacement grant. That was twenty-five thousand dollars to get the new copy oven that Chelsea applied for through the farm to school grant. That one will be awarded in early May according to the schedule, so as that happens, I'll get updates out. There was also a supply chain disruption grant from the USDA. That would be about thirty-one thousand dollars and that could be used to offset food cost increases. It has to be used towards domestically grown produce and milk, but we did the numbers and just the milk aspect of that will be about covered through that grant. So that was a big one. My little corner of the remodel, we have some updates, mostly about the freezer in Linden here. The new one is turned on, they're doing some finishing work around it and then we should be able to transfer product and hopefully get the temporary unit emptied out and, you know, get that off our hands. I recommend kind of leaving that Linden freezer in place to handle overflow and to accommodate some, you know, extra purchasing so that we have that buffer and to kind of alleviate some of the holding costs that we get on our commodities when they sit in that warehouse because we don't have room to accept them. And then meal pricing, as far as I know, there's currently no legislation to extend the no cost meals to the families yet. So as of right now, we are planning on returning to the old free, reduced, full price model in the fall. Pricing on that is going to get determined once we get more guidance from the state. Those were the extent of my updates. Any questions? Try and answer. All right.
Sounds, sounds like a lot of fun. Thank you so much, Eric. Appreciate it. Okay, winner rate, board committee report, six point four.
I'll do the personnel committee. So as you know, we had increase in, proposed increase in price of insurance through P. So we had an opportunity to look at Brian Tigerson's contract, which pays for his insurance for the next couple of years. Then he was able to essentially get off our plan so that we could go up for bid and we'd just pay him the value of his contract essentially for the next two years, which was about ninety thousand dollars for the, for his insurance. So it really is a win-win for us, just because we're actually able to get, to go up for bid and the sooner those larger costs get off the, get off our rolls, the better, so. I think that's pretty much it. But that is an item that we add to the agenda for us.
Hopefully we're all getting bids back.
Yep, the bids are due, we're gonna have them in the report, I think.
All right, any other bits? You guys have a policy tonight and operations? All right, we'll just move on to your Andy Dandy report.
Andy Dandy.
Here we go.
Yeah, I hope it's still Andy, yeah. Construction update. Furniture was delivered last Monday and then today. So after the meeting, if you want to go for a walk or if you're here another day, the middle school and high school office furniture is there. And it's all been put together and in place. Yeah, almost all of those to office areas are in place. The south end here, down by the new gymnasium and that commons and that community room, of course, they're still working in there, so that stuff is in storage down in the storage room in the gym. So when that's available, we're going to just start sliding up. So the booths and tables and all that stuff, and then Eileen's office and Tracy's office. All the stuff is here, it's just a matter of when they can get access and those rooms finished, so it's moving up. The Dover site, today it got moved from the interior connection semi to a Comstock semi out by the baseball field because there's nowhere to put it. And so it's going to sit and wait there until we can move it in. So it was a nice for the people that were moving it, it was just, we walked right into the other semis, so it was an easy transfer, but they will come back. So the nice thing about them is when they come, when we purchase the furniture, the sum assembly required is over. So they take care of that, they set it up. And I met with Kevin Monday and Tuesday last week to make sure this stuff fit. We had to modify some of the furniture due to the office layouts were different for the drawings, so we had to make some adjustments, but they do look good and they fit, so if you want to take a peek, you can. Construction update, we are going to have a work session next week. It's going to be very important as we move forward through the, hopefully, the last four or five months of this project and just some questions, some things that we got to look at, budget issues potentially or not, it could, could be just fine, but. So we'll have more of that next week after our meeting. Insurance update. So the gym floor, met with Greg last Wednesday, I think it was, Wednesday, Thursday morning. Anyway, we don't have thought insurance, we don't have the mold coverage, whatever, so they're not going to fight the settlement that we got from Travelers. Visited with them today a little bit and some emails, also talked to Kip in my meeting last week with him, our construction lawyer. We're debating whether or not we just add that to that as part of the mediation and whatnot. Haven't made that decision yet. Did some investigating, like I said, with Travelers today, met with Nat Shop again this afternoon. Working through, I had some more questions about why they ran it. Working through, I had some more questions about why they ran it through a certain claim form instead of another, and he's trying to get answers for me for that tonight and tomorrow. So hopefully, we can get more than the 9,800 bucks that we're offering at this time. That's that. Insurance, the other insurance is the health insurance. So we will be getting bids, May 4th is when they're due to us. So as David said, we, we have moved forward with removing some of this contract and so that's going to help us in our bid numbers. And the companies that's, that are going to bid it have agreed that they would remove those. It's still going to be a little conservative because they know there's more than just that, but it will be advantageous for us, or it has been or will be because our numbers will come back better for sure. Now, better is a relative term. We were going to have a 50% increase from P. Not sure what this will be. We'll wait to see May 4th, but we are getting bids. That's good. Some schools in our predicament are not getting any bids. Now, it's required by law to give you a bid, so you can imagine what those bids are because they don't want them, so they're going to bid them so they don't get them. It's in a very unfortunate situation, but we'll see if we're going to win a lot by 4th. So be more to discuss at that point for sure. Middle school gym, I think they talked about that as well. I guess I went out of order here. The other thing about the insurance, we're going to have to do an addendum to the teacher contract. Haven't reached out to them yet. We're working on the language and we're going to have to meet with that group. It's just some verbiage that is not technically correct in the contract and it doesn't mean the contract's going to change necessarily, but just some of the language and how it's presented, if the placement of it in the contract has to change in order to be in compliance. So kind of learning a lot about this whole insurance thing as we work through.
That came from Baller.
That came from a recommendation from Baller, or actually, it's not so much a recommendation as it's required. So they caught it, they saw it. Doesn't sound like the first one they've seen this way, but nonetheless, we got to make a change on the language. So we're working with the teachers group on that here shortly. MCA's, MCA's, tomorrow, we, tomorrow and Wednesday, we have the last of the elementary math tests. Science tests are going to be May 3rd and that's going to be it. And then we'll be wrapped up. Obviously, there's some makeups, some kids are gone on that. The final day is May 13th that they have to be done by. I talked to Brittany this afternoon and that's just what she said. She said, oh, we should be good by May 3rd or that week of May 3rd. So that's good. I think that's enough. Any questions?
No.
Awesome.
I have actually one.
Yes.
Sorry, I took a long enough pause.
One, two.
You're good.
For the MCA's, so DGF as a whole is compared to other class or other schools or is it even broken down to like this teacher, to this teacher within DGF as far as like.
Yep, we can know all of it. You can know all of it if, I mean, we can get into the weeds pretty deep, yeah, if you want.
And is that information shared with teachers?
Yep, teachers know what their kids are getting for sure.
Do they know what other, and they don't, and they don't know?
Yep, well, they're going to know the school and so again, I wish I was spending more time in this stuff. I just, I haven't at all, just being a hundred percent honest right now. This is something that, I was the MCA testing coordinator of the last two districts, so I got really into it. Then I got the percentages and dug into it. So there's a lot you can do with it and we need to start doing some of that as well here. I don't know to what extent has it's been done here in the past and, but that's how you learn about standards and you're teaching it. So as an example, you want to make sure your alignment and your pace is correct. Fifth grade math tests is one of the harder ones. You'll see sometimes math, fifth grade math scores drop a little bit. The content's harder, it's a little bit more adept, but the other thing is, in order to have them be successful in the fifth grade math test, you have to get farther along in your curriculum than you typically sometimes get to by the start of the year. So sometimes you're testing fifth graders on something they didn't get. Or you got to be careful of that so you're not missing out. So those concepts are shared, the standards are shared, the sample questions are shared, so the teacher should know, oh, yikes, I gotta get to that. I have to at least introduce it because I don't want kids to be tested on something they haven't even seen before. It's not teaching to the test necessarily, but you certainly don't want to test somebody on something they've never seen before, right? So you understand. That's where pacing is really important. In all subject areas, that one just pops out of me because in my previous two schools, that was something that seemed like we were constantly evaluating. Maybe that's not an issue here. Again, I haven't looked at that, but yeah, so there's a lot of comparison. I dug into that quite a bit and I think as we get this information, that's something we'll do this summer for sure and start to analyze. What's difficult right now is all the education that's been lost in the last two years. It's going to be hard to measure that. It's going to be a little scary. Hopefully, we get pleasantly surprised with our scores. You know, it's hard to, it's just going to be hard to measure, I guess, but we'll see. Yeah, it's something we definitely want to do for sure.
Wonder rate, any other questions, team? All right, 7.1, approval of our regular April 11 meeting. Do we have a motion? So, motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, 8.1, plans in the councilor is $1,445,377.59. Also included in your packet is the treasurer's monthly budget report. We're going to be approving the retirements of Jane Beer, paraprofessional, effective the end of the 21, 22 school year, the retirement of Kathy Jorgensen, paraprofessional end of the 21, 22 school year, and resignation of Chandi Boran, interpreter, effective the end of the 21, 22 school year. Do we have a motion? So, motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any questions or discussion? Any bill questions?
I got a couple. One that you guys didn't listen to last meeting, keep the number sound.
This is true. It went up significantly. Yeah, so, yeah, so the construction, this construction number was a little different. Last night, it wasn't hardly one bill. I mean, this is.
Average is good, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I did the, one was, I think, just the name, I was, the one on floor to ceiling. It says, it's got to be just in the title, it says carpet on floor and home. So my question is, I'm hoping it's just the title, that they're not putting some carpet in some home somewhere.
Well, I didn't get in on that, so, gosh, I got to talk to them. It was from who, did you say?
Floor to ceiling.
Oh, floor to ceiling, yeah. Oh, gosh.
It might be because of the way it's titled, I don't know.
Consult fees and services. Oh, carpet, that's their name, their title, yeah.
Carpet on floor.
Yes, it's on floor and home. Yeah.
That's a good one. My other question.
I have to visit.
I missed out on it. Other question is from, I think, Red River, like, see, what did they do with that glass or something?
It is.
Yeah, I Googled that, actually. It's like, what is that?
They're doing all of our glass. And if you look at our new additions, there's a lot of glass.
And hopefully, we're not getting billed for those broken glass.
Nope, that was on them. Nope, that was, that was, you remember, there were six of those, believe it or not. We, so just to be full disclosure, we had a little water leak yesterday and it was due to the same company. Interesting enough, you brought that up. There was some flashing that wasn't correctly installed and so they were here today already fixing it. So.
It seemed like a lot of money, but I'm guessing, yeah, but it was glass, it was just a lot of glass.
There was a lot of glass, yeah, they've had a lot of, yeah, it was just a lot of glass.
That's the only two things I was kind of stuck on that we.
Are we needing to replace an interpreter then?
Yeah, already done.
Oh, okay.
I think we approved it last week or last month. Pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah, or a month ago. We've already interviewed for the interpreter.
Rup's giving a very confused look.
Is she?
Yes.
Well, then I won't hook over there then.
But we will if we have it.
We have, I'm trying to think, so I've had a lot of different conversations and I thought the interpreter, I know the speech was done. I'm honest, interpreter, but I know who's smarter than me in the room and she's right over here, so we'll have that discussion. I know that.
If you could send us an email, write it down and email us the discussion, that'd be great.
Mary Ann, interpreter, gosh, anyway, well, thank.
So, yeah.
Anything for construction, I could answer.
Thank you for the two paraprofessionals. I know that both have been here a very long time and they'll be greatly missed, so. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion by Laura, second by David, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. New unfinished business, 9.1, continuing contract status. This is in your packet, so, so those teachers, continuing contract status, third year at our school district are Angel Akri, Rachel Gilbert, Mackenzie Sorum, and Michael Wiz, I'm going to say it.
Wizka.
Okay. And then continuing contract status, first year at our school district is Ken Hendrickson and Tiffany Dulish. So that is who we are approving this evening. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.2, this is the first reading of the following policies. 533 Wellness, 614 School District Testing Plan and Procedure, 615 Testing Accommodations, Modifications and Exemptions for IEPs, Section 504 Plans and LEP Students, 618 Assessment of Student Achievement, 619 Staff Development for Standards, 703 Annual Audit, 707 Transportation of Public School Students, 708 Transportation of Non-Public School Students, 709 Student Transportation Safely, 713 Student Activity Accounting, 720 Bending Machines, and 802 Disposition of Obsolete Equipment and Material. Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Again, this is the first reading. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, 9.3, this is certified, certified contract for Gabriel Lasia, A teacher, effective the 22, 23 school year. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This is full-time position, right?
Yep.
All right, 9.4, certified contract for Morgan Lasilla, I'm assuming they must be married.
They are.
Special education teacher, effective the 22, 23 school year. Do we have a motion? David, second by Nicole or Brittany, Brittany. Well, welcome to them.
Yeah.
All right, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.5 is a certified contract for Kristen Kadri, early childhood special education teacher, effective the start of the 22, 23 school year. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.6, confidential contract for Mark Jorgensen, technology, effective July 1st at $20 an hour. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany, any questions or discussion?
There's some new positions. Nope, this is, he's, we gave him a part-time contract this year because of the extent of the work we need to do to get all these vent cues in the rooms and all that, we know that we need him on one more year. So even when we did the contract with him last year, we thought it might go into this next year as well and we need him. And so we, basically, it's the identical contract that he has this year except we gave him a 3% increase.
So it's not full-time?
180 days, yeah. So it's not a year round, it's 180 days, so.
And Marcus is fantastic.
And he is fantastic, yeah. His wife has retired, you may have noticed earlier.
She was with the Rockets, not with me.
She's a pair, yeah. And so he's going to give her a little hand, kidding. He's going to, no, but we really need him, obviously, with the building and the project and getting it up to speed, so. He's agreed to stay on one more year.
What is one more year?
Yep, so it's another 180-day contract. We both talked and it doesn't, he thinks that that'll be enough too, but you just want to make sure that we got that right and we do appreciate him, he's fantastic, so.
Okay. We're going to have a motion by Nicole, a second by Brittany, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.7, this is the addendum to the retirement contract of Brian Tegason in regards to health insurance. Do we have a motion?
Hmm.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, any further questions or discussion?
Does he pay like in installments or like?
Yeah, July 1st of 2022, he's going to receive it first and then the following year, you'll get it on July 1st again for 2023. And that's what the agreement says, yeah. He'll get paid that at the beginning of the year, of the fiscal year for school, July 1st, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next board meetings, we are going to meet next Monday evening on May 2nd. We're here for a work session to discuss some construction updates that we need to address. So hopefully, we're going to be, that'll be probably a heard stop after an hour, there's a high school concert that David and I need to attend. And then the next board meeting will follow the next Monday, on the ninth, at 6 o'clock here, with a budget committee meeting at the conclusion of the board meeting. So any other things, team?
Just a reminder, we have policy after this meeting.
Yep, policy after this meeting. Again, our last plug, anybody's watching, because I'm thinking we've all tuned out, but we are hiring for many positions. Please go on our school's website, contact the district office. Eileen Monter will be your new best friend if you apply for a job and.
I didn't need an interpreter today, so.
Yeah, I listened on that one. You nearly sent out something about Marcus, 61% is our number. I didn't quite understand or.
Oh, that's the construction project? Yeah, we're at 61.
That's how far we are completed.
Yep, yep, both sites now are right at 61. Now, when I meet this Thursday, it's going to be a little different than that. That includes the additions and the modifications that we've added to it. So the Dilworth jumped from 58 or something to 61 because we're eliminating some scope over there. Here, there's more additions to it, so this one kind of froze at 61 and still at 61. But now it includes all around, so. Yep, that will be part of our discussion too during that work session.
Okay.
It's kind of, yeah.
Sounds good. All right, meeting is adjourned, 6:46. Okay. I think we want to walk down there. Can you be able to walk down there and look at the.